Okay, we're just about at 7:00 PM. This is Mike Murphy, can you hear me? So, good night. Okay, so it's 7:00 PM. Welcome to the September, or our former meeting of the Town and Milton Planning Board. Ms. Blanchard, would you please call the attendance of the board?
Mr. Merciano?
Here.
Ms. Padula?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Ms. Vandenza?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Chairman Bartow?
Here.
We'll start this evening with the flag. Thank you, and just so the record shows, Pat Collins is Zooming in. Myself and Mr. Whittle are doing both Zoom and here virtually, and Amanda and Tina are in the camp, so we do our best to keep everybody in the loop here. We're continuing this hybrid arrangement with in-person and attendance of board staff and project applicants and some public while we're Zooming the meeting. This is only our second meeting, so please bear with us as we adapt to this new technology and some of the limits that we have. We have a couple opportunities for the public to interface with us this evening, and I would ask that if you're Zooming with us and you want to make a public comment, please use the hand-wave feature and alert us to your interest in commenting. You may also use the Q&amp;A feature and submit a question, however, we will not accept anonymous questions. If you have dialed-in on the phone feature of Zoom and would like to make a comment, please call the office number at (518) 842-764, or text Bill Lewis at (518) 376-1831. Provide your name and interest in making a comment, and we will accommodate that. As with our usual comment protocol, we request that you announce yourself, state your address, then present your comments in three minutes or less. As everybody knows, according to our zoning code, each year expected to contain four hours of continuing education each year. For 2020, I believe we all attended the Saratoga County Planning Conference in February, which more than met those training requirements. We heard this week, however, that the county will not be doing any in-person training in 2021, so we'll need to look at other options for training, virtual or otherwise. The county has said that they'll be looking into opportunities for virtual training. We also recently received an announcement from the Capital District Regional Planning Commission on some online options that they're offering. I also know that the Tug Hill Commission is looking at some virtual options next March. So, I'll reach out to Councilwoman Kerr and Supervisor Lotnick, and we'll talk about how we'll accommodate getting those credit hours in in 2021. Or it's always possible the board could date that for a year if they felt that it was just too hard to get. I think we're going to see lots of opportunity that we can do it anyways. That concludes my comments for the chair. Does anybody have anything else for the board at this point they want to say?
Chairman, I don't know what shape or what about. Hi, there is a little audio from the secretaries calling the board.
Okay. All right, so Tina, either you have to speak up or use the mic when you do the polling.
Okay.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Yep. So, our next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from September 16th, 2020. Everybody should have a copy of those. I'll entertain a motion to approve the September 16th, 2020 Planning Board meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the September 16th, 2020, for twenty minutes every.
Do I have a second?
Chairman, I have a second, yes.
Any discussion, comments, changes to the minutes? There being none, I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes. Tina, poll the board.
Mr. Merciano?
Yes.
Ms. Padula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandenza?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Bartow?
Yes. Okay, at this point, we will open the meeting to public comment, and if anybody is here from the public and would like to make a comment, or if anybody's phoning in or Zooming in, I would ask that you either call Bill Lewis at (518) 842-764, or text him at (518) 376-1831. Anybody can publicly speak. Yes. Please state your name and your office.
Hi, my name is Dorothy Christensen. I'm at 126 Hutchins Road, Boston Spa. I am concerned about the units at 433 Giza Road that is going to be discussed tonight in preparation for possibly having the town rent it. Right now, we seniors, the Boston area senior citizens, are sort of in the dark about what the timetable is. I know you're discussing that tonight, I know you're discussing the issues that need to be taken care of, but we don't know if the planning board has to have a public hearing on this, if the town board has to have a public hearing on this. It could be a long-term process before the town board gets the funding to actually replace the roof on the building. In the meantime, we seniors are banned from this building except for two small rooms, and that's not sufficient for the 400 of us, even if we are meeting in a socially safe manner, we still have a lot of people that would be using this, and all the buildings surrounding this building are all senior citizens, and they come here for their socialization. So, I'm hoping after you have your discussion today that you can actually give us some sort of a timetable. Are we talking about we'll be in by January, we'll be in by April, we'll be in by 2022? We've got to know what's going on, because we're all in a Twitter about it. That's a terrible way to say it. I don't use Twitter, I will never tweet, but we're all upset about it and not knowing what's happening, this business of the last board meeting where, oh, there was a snag, doesn't tell us much of anything. And so, we'd like to know definite dates, so that we can try to do some planning.
Well, I mean, we'll be discussing it when it gets to the agenda item, but I can speak to the timeframe that the planning board would be looking at. I don't know that I can definitively speak to the timeframe that the town board would be looking at.
Right.
I am aware that it's trying to expedite it as much as you can.
Right.
But we'll speak to the timeframe.
Fantastic, I really do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else from the public have a comment? Anybody texting Bill, or who's called in?
No, just them.
Okay, so that will close the public comment section and move on to the continuation of the active solar special use permit and site plan review. So, this evening, we continue our review of the Sodeman Road Community Solar Project for Thor by Active Solar, and I'll note that Counselor is stepping down, he's accusing himself for this project, and Jim Craig is representing the town as attorney on this project. I note that the applicant is also before the Zoning Board of Appeals for an area variance. In last month, we started the review of the project and commenced the coordinated review as required for a Type 1 action under SECRE. This evening, we'll continue our SECRE review so that the zoning board is able to act if they choose to, and following their public hearing, which will continue, I believe, tomorrow evening. For our continued review this evening, you should have before you move documents, including correspondence dated September 18th, 2020, from our engineer to New York State D.C., New York State Parks and Recreation, and the Milton ZBA regarding the Planning Board's seat and lead agency status, correspondence dated October 5th, 2020, from our engineer providing their first review of this project and SECRE information and analysis, correspondence dates September 22nd, 2020, from New York State D.C. agreeing to the Milton Planning Board as lead agency, state environmental quality review, full environmental assessment form, Part 2, the identification of potential impacts, dated 10/21/20, a state environmental quality review, full environmental impact statement, Part 3, evaluation of impacts, notice of determination, dated 10/13, prepared by MJ Engineering for our consideration, New York Community Solar Facility decommissioning plan dated September 2020, received by our Planning Department on 10/9/20. And this evening, we got the, was it, is the only court of engineers, letter dated, received by, October 21st, 2020. And that's what we have for documents before. At this point, we've completed what is necessary for the Milton Planning Board as lead agency for this project under SECRE. Mr. Bianchi, do you have any comments that you want to summarize for the board?
No, other than we provide the draft finding for consideration, no comments on that.
Now, I'm going to read into the record the 18 questions on the state environmental review, Part 2, identification of potential impacts. Okay, so I'm going to read these in groups, and if there's been a generic, no, I'm not going to run through all the sub-questions. Impact on land, proposed action may involve construction on physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site, and, and yes, absolutely, it's going to have excavation and replacement of solar mounted panels on the site. So, the action will have an impact of small or no impacts with respect to any depth to water table, there will be slopes greater than 15%. Proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed within five feet of the existing surface. Proposed action may involve excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. Proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year. I don't think that's really the case, at least I'm hearing from Active Solar. Proposed action may be located within a coastal erosion area, and it is not. Okay, question two. Impact from geological features, proposed action may result in modification or destruction or inhibit access to a uniquely usual landform on the site. No. Impacts on surface water, proposed action may affect more or no wetlands or surface waters, bodies, and yes, will not create a new water body. Proposed action may result in an increase in over 10% or more of 10-acre increases surface area of any water body. No. The proposed action involves dredging more than 100 cubic yards of material, possibly. Proposed action may involve construction within adjoining freshwater wetland or tidal wetland. Freshwater wetlands are on the site, but I believe you're avoiding them all by the buffers, so no. Proposed action may create turbidity in a water body by different upwind erosion runoff or disturbing land sediments. No. Proposed action may include construction of more or impacts to withdraw mill. Proposed action may include construction of more or outfalls to discharge wastewater. No. Proposed action may cause soil erosion, otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge, possibly in minimal, we have a stormwater pollution prevention plan, so this is part of this project. Proposed action may affect water quality of any water bodies within downstream of the city with proposed action. No. Proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or pesticides. No. Proposed action may require construction of new expansion of existing stormwater treatment. No. Impact on groundwater? No. Impact on flooding? No. Six, impact on air? No. Impact on plants and animals? Yes. Proposed action may result in the loss of flora or fauna. It can cause a reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species. There's a small chance there is any one of that's out there around this site. Proposed action may result in reduction degradation of any habitat used by rare, endangered species. That's small, again with the bats. Proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals, again with bats, and a small chance of that. And it may result in the reduction or degradation of habitat used by any species of special concern. No. May diminish the capacity of a registered natural heritage landmark. No. Proposed action may result in removal of ground disturbance or portion of designated significant natural community. No. Proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting breeding, foraging, or over-mating habitat of the dominant species that occupies the project. No. Proposed action requires conversion of more than 10 acres of forest, grassland, or any other regional or local area. No. Proposed action involves the use or reassignment of pesticides. No. Impact on agricultural resources? No. Impact on aesthetic resources? Yes. Proposed action may be visible for any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic aesthetic resource. No. Proposed action may result in construction elimination of significant screening of more or designated scenic views. No. Proposed action may be visible for publicly accessible advantage points, possibly seasonally, definitely not be around, but it'd be small. Ben, the situation or activity of the viewers are engaged while doing proposed action is routine, traveled by residents? Yes, possibly. Proposed action may cause enrichment, public enjoyment, appreciated, and designated aesthetic resources? No. There are similar projects within the following distance of the proposed project? Yes, this is what, about a mile, the proposed one? If that's, that one? Impact on historical archaeological resources? No. Impact on open space and recreation? No. Impact on critical and vulnerable areas? No. Impact on transportation? No. 14, impact on energy? No. 15, impact on noise, odor, and light? No. 16, impact on human health? No. 17, consistency with community plans? No. Consistency with community character? No. Anybody have any additional comments or questions to add on what's been used here or been presented here? Okay, sorry, I'm using the microphone, maybe you decide. All right. Having identified no moderate to large impacts that may occur as a result of this project, I will now entertain a motion as lead agency, the Town and Milton Planning Board, to determine that the proposed action to construct a community solar project at 434 Sodeman Road will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment, and therefore, an environmental impact statement will not be prepared, and the chair is authorized to sign a determination of significance and submit the notice of determination of non-significance. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Next, Stevens?
I'll second.
A little second. Are there any discussions by the board at this point? There being none, Tina, please poll the board.
Mr. Merciano?
Yes.
Ms. Padula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Pat? Unmute. Yes.
Ms. Vandenza?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Bartow?
Yes.
With SECRE completed, the ZBA may continue its review of the variance request, and we'll be holding our site plan review and special use permit scheduled for a hearing at 7:05 PM on Wednesday, November 18th, but I believe, Mr. Collins, you wanted to address the board on some of this?
Yeah.
Yes, you may.
So, who's in that? Good evening. One of the things we're asking the board is if you would consider a special meeting as we're trying to meet a deadline for this project with the tax credits ending this year, it's about a 6% increase in revenue for this project, and I've asked Mr. Bartow if he'd consider it earlier if he wanted to bring it up to the rest of the board. Since we can Zoom, I hope it's not too much of an inconvenience. Also, consider we're trying to help the town on this one with a generous payment upfront on this, so if you could accommodate us, we'd appreciate it.
So, I believe we need to do a 10-day notice for public hearing? So, we're going to take a look at zero calendars, I mean, even if we've got a notice published yet tomorrow? Earliest we could schedule this would be the second, is it calendar days that came to last? Five days? So, we could, all right, here's my, my challenge. You can't do it until after the plan, the ZBA needs to mount it, so the earliest that we could publish the notice is Friday, 2020. Five business days?
Tina, is that all right with you?
Yes.
Because I assume you're doing that work.
Yeah, that's good. That's fine.
If the board was willing to consider it, we could conceivably meet on the 29th, 30th, or 21st. I cannot meet between November 2nd and 1st. So, we'd be looking at the 29th, 30th, or 2nd, the earliest we can possibly. Can't do it the 21st.
Seconds on Monday.
That even? Okay, so the other option is, how would the board feel in meeting via Zoom without me there? I never give you more options than that. I'm perfectly fine if you do that and you have to be there, just as you want.
What about the, what about the Friday?
They're not going to work for me, so if they work for you?
Oh, that didn't work for you.
I could do Friday the 30th.
I could do Friday the 30th.
Everybody do Friday the 30th. Tina, can you just?
Well, it's going to be early, and then you have to.
Yeah, seven would be typical. I'll be coming back, I'll be coming back out of the Adonis, and I don't think it's going to be for a long meeting.
I'll accommodate whatever you guys want, so I'm happy you consider.
All right. Yeah, I can do 7:00 o'clock or 3:00.
Could be earlier.
My only risk, could, but, I mean, like I said, driving out of the Adonis, I'm fully ready. So, I'll definitely be on the 7th.
Okay. Should that work? What day?
Friday, October 30th, 7:00 PM.
It means like you had to pick Friday.
Okay. I'll need to do that by a resolution, since we scheduled the hearing by resolution, so what I'll entertain is a motion that we schedule the continued review and public hearing for the Active Solar Project, 434 Sodeman Road, of 7:05 PM on Friday, October 30th.
Mr. Chairman, I assume that we schedule a site plan review and special use for the Sodeman Road solar project on Friday, October 30th, at 7:00 PM.
I'll second that, Chairman.
Any further discussion by the board?
Did you say it was going to be on Zoom?
It'll be Zoom, yeah, we'll do it Zoom, so we don't have to come here and get everything done. Okay, no more comment, discussion, Tina, please poll the board.
Mr. Merciano?
Yes.
Ms. Padula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandenza?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Bartow?
Yes. Frank, you got anything else you want to bring our attention?
One other question, last time we ran a project through, we had a little confusion, I think, on the pilot, and one of the things that happened was we conditioned the approval upon the pilot. I guess my question to you is, do you expect that to happen again? The reason I'm asking is, we've been advised by our attorneys that it's illegal and unconstitutional to condition an approval upon a tax mechanism, or taxation, upon taxation. So, I just bringing that to your attention, I think we can work through it whichever way it happens, but just thought I'd bring up the point.
At the advice of our counsel, he's asking us to meet, have that understood?
Understood.
Would I will speak to him again?
Yep. And that's all I have, and I appreciate your Fridays, but.
Yes, thank you. Tina, if you would just get a calendar notice, everybody, well, I'll schedule the Zoom. Frank, I'll leave it from you, I know I keep asking for these, but if you can get me all the emails, the people you want to be participants?
No problem. I'll make sure we have that. Thank you.
And I'll have to go hold Mr. Craig tomorrow. Mr. Henry, do you want to join us again? Okay, next before us is an amendment to 91 Hutchins Road Plan Development District. The town board has referred a request to amend the Hutchins Road Senior Housing Plan Development District to ask for our review pursuant to Section 1862 of our zoning code. The applicant is seeking to amend the PDD legislation, Local Law Number 5, passed on October 24, 2018, to increase the number of available garages in the units from 52 to 71. That would create 19 units that would have two-car garages and leave 33 units to the single-car garages. For our review this evening, we have before us correspondence dated September 10th, 2020, from Michael Tuie to the town board requesting the proposed amendment to the PDD, included in that were some changes to the site plan and some other attachments that reflect what they're proposing. Also, another one was draft legislation to amend the Hutchins Road Senior Housing PDD. I believe that's changed significantly than what was submitted to us.
We have submitted a non-draft.
Regarding the state environmental quality review on this one, the town board was the original lead agency on this local law, we're going to defer to them to do it, so that's going to mean that some of our action will have to wait until they make their SECRE determination. But for right now, why don't you present to the board?
Have you received the SECRE we forwarded?
Yes, I should correct that, there was the full environmental assessment form we did get.
I'm Mike Tuie, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I've got the developer, Joe Danable, is also here with regard to any particular questions you have. This combined Zoom and in-person meeting is, I haven't done this before, to be very honest.
Don't necessarily.
It's one of the others, so.
Other than Pat Collins, nobody else?
And I'm the guy that's doing this computer thing is making me a little crazy.
Good.
But the, I'm trying to get a shared screen, and it comes up with a host disable participant screen.
Hold on, I can do that, I can do that. Okay, you should be able to share the screen now.
Say that again, please.
You should be able to share your screen now. See that little green box?
Yep, yep, yep. I was trying to make sure I got the right presentation.
Yes, you want to make sure that, it's very easy to pick up the wrong thing. You could have your kid's school report gone wrong or something.
Well, I don't seem to have it, and Joe's already got it, you got it by screen. Let me, let me just go on, go on in. What we're here for is an amendment to the Hutchins Road Plan Development District that has been approved by the town board. What we believe is a simple request, because we are not changing the nature of the project, we are not changing the number of units within the project. What's happened is the developer has determined from their marketing that only having one garage, interior garage space, for all that only having one garage, interior garage space, for all of these units is not something that a lot of people want. There are people who would like to have the availability to have two garage spaces with regard to this particular project. So the only real change that we're making is that as opposed to 52 units with one-car garages, thus one parking space behind them, we're going to include 19 units that have two-car garages and 31 units that have one-car garages. That thus increases the number of garage spaces within the project to 71 spaces. And it also increases the number of parking spaces off-road to that same 71. One of the things that we recall when we first brought this before your board and the town board was there was concern that there was not enough off-road parking spaces. Thus, we've increased that off-road parking by an additional 19 in the driveways and additional parking with the units. The proposals with regard to the legislation merely was my attempt. And if this is not pleasing to anyone, we can stay with the same thing we had now. This is a real process to do what I perceive to be a relatively minor alteration of a project. There's still 52 units. What is happening is whether or not there's one-car or two-car garages. And you've got to go to the town board, to your board, back to the town board, and that takes an extended period of time. This seems to me to be a planning issue, whether or not it is pleasing to you. And I was attempting to give ourselves an option to not have to go through the town board process, merely have an additional change to the PDD site plan approval. Town attorney, in my first draft, and this is what the chair alluded to, did not want to have the town board be wholly excluded. And so I changed the wording in that we could do that upon notice to the town board. And if they said they didn't like that process, then we'd go back to the old way. I was just trying to streamline the number of appearances everybody had had to do on this. With regard to the site, Joe is here. The setbacks are all being complied with. Everything having to do with the ground and the land is being complied with. The road system internal to the site is not becoming any greater. Joe, is there any other aspects of the plan that would be altered with regard to the proposal? What we have up on the board and you have in the packet that you have, we've supplied you with, is the new plan showing the sporadic utilization of the two-car garages as opposed to the one-car garage? They are randomly placed on purpose so as to be able to be compliant with the planning restrictions that we have pertaining to the use of land. Joe?
Good evening, Joe Danable with Environmental Design Partnership. As we looked at the changes to the plan, again, they are relatively minor. But as you take a look at the secret forms.
Is this better?
As we look at the elements related to secret that were previously proved in this project, we look at things like the overall limits of disturbance, which has not changed at all as a result of this. We look at traffic impacts. There is no increase in traffic associated with this project. There's no increase in water demand or sewer demand associated with this project. All of the setbacks, spacing between the buildings, setbacks from property lines, setbacks from the edge of pavement are all identical to the improved plans. The only change in the plans with the addition of the garages and additional parking spaces, there's about 8,000 square feet of additional impervious area on the site. That is being looked at from a stormwater standpoint. We don't anticipate any changes in the plans from a stormwater standpoint. There were certainly some freeboard available to us in the original design. So again, we are looking at relatively minor, very insignificant changes in the overall site plan. That relates about 8,000 square feet of additional impervious area.
Did you go up ahead and again, because I think I looked at it differently? In terms of the garage, you're only adding about 160 square feet per garage? So wouldn't that be more like 3,000 square feet?
The garage and the asphalt area behind the garage. You're adding about additional eight feet of pavement between the garage and the road. Everything all added together. So there's about 8,000. I will say we were certainly on the conservative side with that number. It could be slightly lower than that.
Okay.
When you have the two-car garage, there's more black powder. Because.
Yeah, no, no, I didn't factor that in.
Right, so we were talking 8,000 square feet, roughly, slightly less than two tenths of an acre increase in impervious area overall.
He just said that the buildings weren't going to be any farther. They're going to be the same distance apart?
The buildings were required to be no closer than 25 feet to each other. By putting the garages in, we still need that requirement. We strategically placed those garages so that none of the buildings shown on this plan are closer than 25 feet. And I think we're actually still only about 26 to 27 at the closest point.
And that's a far, far closest, right, though?
Not a far closest.
Any other? Does she have something you want to say?
Nope.
Go ahead, Bernadette.
So looking at your plan, you have that one set of units at the bottom to the right that has the garages next to each other rather than on the outsides. It looks like, when I look at the schematic, like number two, I think it is. But it looks like a wall of garage, basically. I'm just curious why that was chosen for that specific law or spot.
One of the specific benefits by having just the garages touching, they call that a soft link connection. Therefore, none of the living space is attached to any one of the buildings to help cut back on noise and make a more appealing setting for those neighbors to live in. Certainly, we may end up switching that unit back to something similar to this or we may try and include one more as we finalize the site plans and move forward. But again, we are looking for just additional.
How many units do you have in this?
Right now, on this plan, we are showing.
It's only one.
Can I say something?
Yeah, you got to come up.
I would like it if you would tell us to do that one like the rest. When we first drew this, we had a few like that and a few the other way. And as it progressed and we met all the distances between buildings, that was the only one left like that. I would rather not build one building different than everything else. So Bernadette, I would love to change it to me.
I would appreciate that. I'm sorry. I would appreciate that and I think probably your community would because it is a wall of garage.
We said the same thing when we.
Okay. All right, I'm glad to hear that.
So the answer to your question is that single unit that has the dual garages next to each other, which is only on the southeast corner of the property, that will be designed into one of the other patterns so that the garages are separated. I just want to make sure that's correct.
Anybody else? Go ahead, John.
One quick question. When we talked about this a while ago, we talked about the back part of the property being woods and separating it between the neighbors.
Up here on the back part.
I'm talking about the back part, it's the top.
Market drive.
Yeah, market drive. Unless I misunderstand, and if that's the case, that's fine that I misunderstand. But is that extra planting you're putting in there or is that the trees that you just went to the green?
So this is the approved site plan that's stamped and unfilled with the town? This is the plan that is unfilled with the town as the approved plans. The area that is in question, I believe it is right here. The approved site plan allowed us clear to within five or 10 feet of the property line. However, any of that clearing that we did in that area had to be replanted. Planting plan that we are showing here is what is consistent with the approved plan and that is what is being intended to be planted back in its site. My understanding is those trees have started being delivered to the site today and are getting ready for install over the next week or so.
All right, the reason I'm asking is because naturally I want to buy the place, right? So when you look at it, you know, it's cleared like you say. And I did recall that we were going to either save the trees, you know, depending on how the construction worked out, or we were going to put new trees. And so it looks like new trees are going to go in?
Correct. The new trees, again, consistent with what was approved. There's a row of approximately, we'll have a number on that. I'm looking, there's probably, you guys may know the number better, 40 or 50 evergreen trees being planted along that rear property line.
I think it's about 60.
60.
They started delivering today, the first tractor trailer load. We've got three more coming in hopefully before Friday night.
Thank you. I was just asking about it because I just wanted to be respectful to the neighbors to the north there and so forth. If we did something that was slightly out of step from what we agreed to, I just wanted to make sure that we were going to honor all those agreements, which you guys generally do. I just wanted to see if we were accounted for.
Yeah, so certainly every agreement that is in place in the original site plan approval is still a commitment of this project. There is certainly no change to anything on the approved plan other than adding in the 19 two-car garages and the additional parking spaces.
Thank you.
Before we presented this to the town, that was a source of conversation quite a few times. And the application was designed so that there are no aspects of the site plan that will be amended or altered, other than the fact that Tom figured out that there are people who want to live within the community who have two cars and they don't want the car out in the middle of the winter. So the introduction of two-car garages on 19 of the units, we could do and comply with all the other agreements that we had with the town of Milton. And that was our intent. And that's why we have this particular plan as opposed to, in some cases, more two-car garages because that would have jammed in the buildings slightly more. And we did not want to have to come back to the town board and to your board saying that, you know, we can't do what we promised to do in the first round.
Mike, in regards to the proposal of law, the one we have, the one that you gave to the town board originally now, could you clarify again, you're going to eliminate the recommendation that minor reviews be delegated to the board? Do you have any, or do you have any language?
Can I do this, pass it up? That's the legislation and it is.
So it's the same?
It's the same. There was an original that was submitted. There was an original that was submitted with the petition. And then that was modified at the time we came in with the, for the town board. Basically, what it says, and the key on this, is paragraph two. And it requires the written consent of the town board if we are to go directly to the planning board for what we perceive to be minor changes. And to figure out how we classify that minor change so that it does really fall into the planning process. We have 52 units. We can't build 53 units without going to the town board. But if it is a swale or stormwater question, having to go back through the process to the town board, to your board, to the town board again, doesn't make any sense because my perception was they're going to honor what the planning board wants to have happen. So that's really where the minor change was. Just trying to streamline the process for you and for us.
So this section of law, though, it amended generically, so it implied any future project as well, not just your project?
No, 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 this has to do specifically with this Plan Development District. Hutchins Road Senior has nothing to do with any other project within the town.
Because it says it's amending a section of the existing law. So it just potentially.
The law that we exist within is Local Law Number 5 of 2018. So the only thing that's getting amended is Local Law 5 of 2018.
I just want to be clear on that. We're going to be neutral on that? It's the prerogative of the town board to decide what they want to do there. So when we communicate to them, they'll communicate our internal.
And, but I wanted it to be clear to the planning board also because if the planning board said, well, we don't want that authority or it would be overburdened some to us, you could make a comment on it.
Sure.
I think it's what you do day in and day out as the planning board. And that's exactly what I was trying to key into.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Any more questions?
One more on your, we had you put some, the gas parking in. And I see it's still in there. Are you still going to keep it in the same?
That's got to be in the same.
Kind of same spot, kind of same number?
It's got to be.
Yeah, looking at the plans. Yeah, well, looking at the plans, I see no need to alter or change that parking in any way as a result of these additions.
Thank you.
It's not going to eliminate any of them necessarily. Maybe one extra, couple extra spaces where people have their parking garages or some people work.
Yeah, I didn't think it would. I wanted it to stay the same.
So you're going to get a net 19 exterior spaces?
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, there being no other questions, I will entertain a motion to provide a supportive recommendation to the town board for the amendment of Local Number 5, amending the site plan to include 19 two-car garages. And I will also recommend that the town board assume lead agency status pursuant to the role in previous review. And then they'll have to refer this site plan back to us.
Mr. Chairman, I assume.
Wait a second. Any discussion, any questions? Does everybody understand what we're doing?
I have one question.
Should we also include the change of that cell piece?
That was my question, yes.
Change of which building?
The last building. Would it be down to 18 instead of 19?
No, we'll still say a 19.
You'd just move it to a different building?
Well, just basically, this building is identical to this building here. It's just rather than the garages on the inside or on the outside.
So how do we want to reference that as the?
First building in on the right.
Or more specifically, there will be no two-car garages that are adjacent, immediately adjacent to each other. That's what I thought the complaint was, that it was a wall of garages.
So I'll amend my motion to be amending the site plan to include, sorry, 19 two-car garages, including the alteration of the design of the first building on the right.
And I will second the amendment of motion.
Any further discussion? Thank you. There being none, can you just hold the door?
Mr. Marsacano?
Yes.
Ms. Padula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
I said yes.
Ms. Vandenza?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Berto?
Yes. I'm also going to recommend, if the board agrees, that we not schedule a public hearing on the site plan. So we're not going to have a public hearing.
Any other?
I'm sorry, Chairman, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I'm, I'm going to recommend that we not conduct the public hearing on November 18th. If you agree. Assume you want.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, you did very well for the Zoom technology. We're all trying to be used to it. All right, next we have.
Tina, thank you very much for your patience.
Oh, you're welcome, anytime.
McHenry Realty, 433 Geiser Road Site Plan Review. What is being proposed is alteration of some general office space in the town center at 433 Geiser Road. As part of the review, we have before us a site plan review application including State Environmental Quality Review Act Short Environmental Assessment Form Part One. That originally was incomplete, in fact, it. An office foreplan and proposed a very realty lease between Fred McHenry and the town of Milton. Secondly, a correspondence dated September 28, 2020 from Ernest Gaylor regarding certificate of construction compliance. Third, correspondence dated October 9, 2020 from Fred McHenry to the Milton Town Planning Board and a completed State Environmental Quality Review Act Short Environmental Assessment Form Part One and a site map of the property. Four, a copy of the original building permit application dated May 31, 1988. Five, a copy of a daycare site plan, a date unknown on that, I think it was in the mid 90s. And then various documents from 1987 to 1988 regarding variance requests, county referrals, and planning board reviews. That's what we have for the record on this project at this time. Regarding the State Environmental Quality Review Act, oh, let me step back. I think you and Mr. McHenry?
Oh, no, Dave Pentkowski. Fred asked me to appear on his behalf.
Dave, how you starting on this?
Pentkowski, P-E-N-T-K-O-W-S-K-A.
What? I don't know which microphone is going to do that. Okay, Mr. Pentkowski, you would like to give a presentation or report?
Well. You may. We have to advertise more.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Just wanted to get our.
You, you may know more about the project than I do. I'm late to the game.
Please, Dave, go ahead.
As I understand it, there's some discussion to, for the town to rent portion of 433 Geiser Road and to vacate this building to give it back to the seniors, and that was the project that's going forward. Fred had started renovations back in August, and then somewhere along the line, the town asked him to stop. There's no intention of changing the site in any way exterior of the building unless, tell them on some temporary signage or something. But there's no, no plan to change the parking, change anything about the building, just to modify the interior to accommodate the town's use. And that's pretty much the project. I'm not sure exactly what the concerns are, but I'm here to try to address them and get you answers.
Well, so pursuant to our zoning in the town center zoning district specifically, any alteration in the existing building has to be brought before planning, before certain reviews. So I think in addition to requiring a building permit.
Correct.
There was a requirement that a site plan would be done. And we, we had offered to do a plan consultation, didn't hear anything back on that, so we're assuming tonight is part of that process. So we were prepared to give to you some layout. We changed the checklist for site plan reviews. Tina, do you have a copy of that? So there'd be less documentation required, part of that, to get to the points and address the concerns that we have. So Tina, do you have a copy? So we're eliminating a number, you know, we're asking for 11 of 24 of the ones that normally have to be seen on, to be in there. And we're really focusing on the parking, vehicle pedestrian movement in and around it, outdoor storage, sewage disposal, water supply, stormwater, and signage, and outdoor lighting. So in other words, the fact that we require a site plan, we have to bring in the compliance with any conditions that we have in the town center zoning district and our, our site plan meanwhile that's been amended a couple of times since.
So, so as the building currently exists, you're saying it would not comply in all respects with your current site plan?
The current town center standards and so on. I don't think it'll change the building, but focusing on, are we going to have to not equip them with parking? We didn't have a parking standard back in the day?
To, to accommodate the use that the town is looking for.
It's going to be there. We had questions as to how the sewer and water is going to be disposed. It was really, even in the record that we have, it's unclear. You know, did the sewage get hooked up to deer run as it was originally envisioned to do? Is it still using the onsite well that's providing the water? Then we wanted to know about the flow of pedestrians. Because one of the things in our town center is we want pedestrian accessibility here. And then how would it be if the parking and all that circulation happened? And then lighting, big concern. We have a lot of concerns in the town center, I'm not really sure if that could hold for both safety and physical. Hoping the site plan could be used for us.
Okay. I think I understand your issues. You have no site plan per se at this point from Fred?
There have been various maps. He gave us a floor plan of the office. He gave us some plan that was from back in the original, 1988 session. That plan has some handwritten comments and notes on it. It's unclear when those were written in.
But just for my clarification, the building has a CO now, right, for its current uses?
The building has a CO, but it right now has a stop work order on it due to work that's being done without a building permit. The building has a CO, correct. But the use is in question here.
The new use.
The new use, correct.
I understand.
It's, it's not so much the use in the category of zoning district as the use, use and why, how we're going to need our site plan to do progress.
I understand. It, it, it would not be considered, would it still be considered office use or have you got other classification or?
We made the determination of the general office use.
Yes.
And that is permitted in the district. It just needs a site plan.
I understand.
And then, did you find a signed CO?
I did not find.
So the record doesn't have a signed CO.
Yeah, but we have a, we have a signed building permit application. We do not have, after I get your current on that, the CO was never signed. There was, there's paperwork, there was no inspection sheets on it, just a permit, and it was dated 1988 prior to us having pretty much an effective building permit. I think we had, at best, we had a building permit, we had a gentleman's building permit. But it wasn't, it wasn't to the extremes that we are today, so I think the CO was overlooked during the original install.
And then there've been an alteration more recently, is my understanding, on the, is it the hair salon that's in there? And that never did get, have a purpose?
Yeah, the building, the building was occupied over two years ago as a clinic. I guess there were doctors' offices that occupied it. It was before my time with the town. They since went out of business, it sat vacant for a while. The owner of the building retrofitted and made a salon in part of it. And we got a call from the people that were running the salon about items outside. We went and responded to this, to the location and found that they were building without a permit that had stopped the, stopped work order. And then with researching what was going in there for the use, and that's what gauges, gauged us to send it to the planning board under chapter 18050 in our, in our zoning.
Right, I appreciate that, thank you.
So, thank you, Neil T., as they get to the end of this process, will be COs brought up to date across the building for all uses? And then, I don't know that there's a lot of issues. We're limiting our scope of review. You have an engineer that submitted a report, and Bill just asked the, as the code enforcement officer confirmed it. And then it's really on our end is just the exterior stuff that you.
That's right. You leave again when?
November 18th. Tina, is that correct? That's the date, the date of November is on X plan? So, but with that, and before you leave, I want to deal with our environmental review stuff too.
Please have a great day.
So regarding Seaker, we're going to treat this as an unlisted action, and I'll entertain a motion for the town of Milton planning board to be the lead agency on the 433 Geiser Road Commercial Alteration Site Plan Review.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the town of Milton planning board be the lead agency on the 433 Geiser Road Review for the commercial alterations, site plan review.
Wait a second.
I will second that.
Mr. Collins, let's take a pass on there. Okay, any questions, discussion? If not, Tina, pull the board.
Mr. Marscano?
Yes.
Ms. Pedula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandenza?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Berto?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to declare 433 Geiser Road Commercial Alteration Site Plan Review an unlisted action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the the actions on 433 Geiser Road is an unlisted action proceeding.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Pull the board.
Mr. Marscano?
Yes.
Mr. Dula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandenza?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Berto?
Yes. Okay, and I'll read the environmental assessment questions for the short environmental assessment form. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? I'm saying no, a small impact. Will proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of land use? Saying no. Will proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? I'm saying no. Will proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, like in a walkway? I'm saying no. Will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy if it fails to report reasonable energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? I'm saying no. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies and public-private wastewater treatment supplies? I'm saying a small impact. This is going to help get resolved when we get information about where the sewer and water is derived from. Will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic or archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? I'm saying no. Will proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? I'm saying no. Will proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? I'm saying no. Will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? I'm also saying no. Anybody have any comments or questions on the assessment impacts? There being no documented severe potential adverse environmental impacts, I will entertain a motion that the chair be authorized to document and sign the short environmental assessment form that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the chairman.
Wait a second.
I'll second that, Chairman.
You got Jim got ahead of you, sorry, Pat. Okay.
Rachel Lang.
Tina, will you pull the board?
Mr. Marscano?
Yes.
Ms. Pedula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandenza?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Berto?
Yes. So we've got our list of what we need in the site plan. Bill is around, I'm around, except for the fourth to the 11th. If you have any questions, please feel free to call us. I think the quicker we can get all this together. Our deadline for submission, Tina, will be?
The 18th, the deadline is going to be the?
Fourth?
Fourth at 5:00 p.m.
Fourth at 5:00 p.m. So if we get a site plan that needs those submission requirements, it's conceivable that we have it and could review and make our decision in that evening. I'm also suggesting that we not have a public hearing on this.
Fred, thank you.
Do we agree with open hearing? Is there any other business to be brought before the planning board? Oh, Dot, you had a question about timing. Did I answer that sufficiently?
No.
Okay, no, I, I went through it. I just want to make sure you understood it. So what we've said to them is if they get a completed site plan with the materials that we want, to us by November 4th, we will review that on November 18th and theoretically make a decision. This isn't a rocket science project. I mean, we have some very specific concerns relative to parking and drainage and pedestrian movement and lighting. If they satisfy it, I don't see a problem in getting this done.
Can I ask, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Is there any hope as far as parking is concerned?
Is there any hope?
Hope? Is there space?
Oh, there's 32 spaces supposedly.
Quite in the upper level where we're going to be. There's some in the queue down below. It's not very defined now that the plan was from 1988. Sorry. But you're, but there's sufficient, you see sufficient parking? At this time.
Theoretically, there are pretty sufficient parking. We're asking, what we don't know is how much parking does the salon need?
Right. Well, how much is stated in the lease? How much parking we have as a town? How much handicap accessibility we have? What, what pedestrian traffic from the top to the bottom, if we're going to, if they're going to get, give us parking spaces at the bottom? Right now, there's only one occupied business that's operating in there. If they pull another business, how many parking spots are they pulling from that 20 queue up top? We have multiple employees, which you can see here. We have 11, 11 employees at any given day. We're going to be losing probably one or two, depending on what the layout is or how we're going to lay out. So we'll have potentially nine vehicles at any given time, maybe even more with the supervisor, deputy supervisor, whoever shows up. How many, how many are we going to have geared for the public to gain access? Concern, you know, those are the concerns that were coming up going back before. My other question is, I worked at the University of Albany. I had to park in an outer parking lot and walk to the academic podium to get to work. Is there any discussion about whether or not some of the space on the other side of Geiser Road where you have pizza time and the dog hamper salon and all that jazz, is that a possibility of rental space by the town to?
It's going to come down to the analysis of our zoning and the number of spaces recorded for each building to that. You know, off the top of my head, I don't have that.
Well, my question.
Do you have, we have a formula calculation?
Right.
And in that, I don't believe we can take into consideration also parking.
That's what my question was, whether or not there would be a possibility of renting space across the street for staff members to walk across Geiser Road and have a walkway the same as I had a walk for seven and a half minutes to get from my parking space to my building, not even to my office, to, to the building.
Yeah, I mean, generally, it can be the core onsite parking, the mutual use, and there's a, there's a formula calculation. I mean, generally, if you require onsite parking, you need, and there's a, there's a formula calculation.
Can, can you put in the, this is specious. Can you put in the plan mandating carpooling for your staff? I said it was.
Do that. I don't think we could do that.
Oh, well, I tried.
I don't know that our site plan review allows.
Okay, thank you for allowing.
So I just want to make sure though that you got what we're trying.
So, so the 18th, is it?
I mean, it was conceivable they could have been before us with a plan to might be done.
Yeah. But then it would have to go back to the town board to make the final decision.
They have to sign a lease. That's up to them.
Right.
And they, they'll negotiate when we make a agreement.
Right.
We could have been boss this time.
Or hunt the president or whatever. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, any other business before the board? No other business, I'll undertake an emotional adjournment.
I'll make that one.
Steven, second.
I'll second.
Hello? We are adjourned.